Yeah, I noticed all the good chair. Are we, are we ready? Good, good to go? All right. Okay, I will call the September 8th meeting of the La Haber Heights City Council to order. And we just finished closed session.
Yes, we did have closed session and there's no reportable action.
Thank you. And roll call, Norm?
Here.
Carol?
Here.
Brian?
Here.
And Greg? And John's here. All right, please stand and join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, presentation. So, the city has a proclamation for National Preparedness Month. This has occurred annually in September since, since nine eleven. And it creates an opportunity for, you know, every resident in the city of La Haber Heights to join citizens across the United States in preparedness for their homes, businesses, and communities for any type of emergency in California. You know, obviously, we're an earthquake country, so it's always good to be prepared. And, and with that, I'll just throw out there, you know, we've got a series of Saturday workshops. We'll have one this, this, this Saturday on, on being prepared around the lines of fire inspections and brush clearance. I believe we have some CERT training the following Saturday. And then after that, we have FireWise, right? So we have three Saturdays in a row where, where, you know, the city is very, very fortunate to have residents in the city that are looking forward and working with us to be prepared. So, with that, do we want to do, do we want to move up that item now, Rafferty, or do we want to? Do it now?
Yeah.
Okay, so, we have item, let me find it.
Number seventeen.
Seventeen. So, you know, normally I, these, these meetings are pretty administrative. We go through a list of stuff, but I'll tell you, I was for a week now, or actually, it's been a month, looking forward to this meeting quite a bit because a gentleman that I've grown to know and respect and admire is moving up into a position that is really, really exciting for me, and I can imagine for him, it's a culmination of a very lengthy career here. I can't think of anyone that I would rather have in this role right now. He's someone that really cares about our fire department. He works very hard to make the department successful. The, the department is truly a reflection of him and his hard work that he's put into it for many, many years. The city is so fortunate to have someone like Ed Martin, Ed Martin stepping up to run our department. And, you know, I, I just can't say enough about the man. I'm just almost emotional about this guy moving into this role. So, with that, why don't we have Chief Martin come on up? And I know that his, his family is here and some other folks are here, so we'll do the...
Before we move into that one, can we, there's a recommendation in the report. The report is for the city council to approve the reclassification of the fire chief position from part-time to full-time and the deputy chief position from full-time to part-time. And further recommended that Edward Martin be appointed as fire chief and Greg Terrell be appointed as deputy fire chief.
Sorry, I was too excited. I jumped the gun. So, do I have a motion?
Motion to move approval.
Second.
Norm?
Second. Oh, yes.
Thank you. Carol? Brian?
Yes.
Greg?
Absolutely.
And John's a yes. All right, now, Chief Martin, come on up and his family, come on up. And now we'd like to see if Chief, if you would like to call up Deputy Chief Terrell.
I'm so grateful to have a, a partner that has the same vision, and of course, same history, pretty much. We both come from what we know, a very great department wrought in tradition and integrity and pride. And we're going to bring that to La Haber Heights. Thank you, Greg, for joining me. Like to present you with a few trinkets. Your bed.
So Chief, are you going to wear that uniform to every city council meeting now?
That's a no. It's too hot.
All right. I'll move into, I'll move into public comments. So I've got one card from S- Stephen, I've got, you're, you're the only card I have. Do you want to, is it general comments, or do you want to wait till the item?
Stephen Black in Citron Road, want to talk about the CAL FIRE MAP. Last time, when you did the first reading, there was some discussion about if it would apply to the whole city or just the areas where the CAL FIRE MAP said, you know, as far as the different hazard zones. And I think we were told that it'd be left to a future decision to expand it or not to the whole city. But the municipal code four, four, twenty B says it applies to the whole city. And since the city is allowed to have stricter standards than the state, it would appear that the municipal code would supersede the CAL FIRE MAP as far as being stricter. So if you actually want to wait to decide whether it applies to the whole city or not, that section should be deleted in the municipal code concurrent with the adoption of the CAL FIRE MAP. So, that's just a question I had, is, does the municipal code supersede the CAL FIRE MAP as being stricter? And the very high fire hazard severity zone applying to the whole city still stands regardless of the adoption of the CAL FIRE MAP? Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Any other public comments? Any of our committee members here? Any city council comments?
If I might, I'd like to introduce a young intern who worked for us in the fire department here in 2015 when he was going to Mount SAC Fire Department. I brought him tonight largely to meet Chief Martin and because he has, in his own way, a very soft spot in his heart for the city. Victor, would you come up to the podium? This is Victor Castaneda. Victor is my grandson. He started here in 2015, went on through and became a fireman on the, on the wildfire lines with the United States Forest Service. And today, he's, he's in charge of the Riverside Air Attack Battalion. He has rank of battalion chief at the age of thirty years old. And one of the things I know that Victor will confirm is that his time looking at the volunteer fire department in this city was a very big incentive for him to move his life into firefighting. You want to talk quickly about that, Victor?
Sure. Hello, thanks for having me. Happy to be here. Happy to be back. Like I said, I was here 2013 to 2016 with Doug Graft, who was the chief back, back when. Like I said, a lot being here in La Haber Heights, it's helped me tremendously, not just as a person, but as a now leader. And help, helping just not the community, but the state and all natural resources and everybody that is in need. But I'm happy to be here. I come from now, Seminole Forest. I'm one of the fire management officers there with all the aircraft and equipment and logistical needs there. And like I said, I, in testament to here in La Haber, the city of La Haber Heights, it's done a lot for myself and my family and then helping to give others as well.
Thank you. And thanks, Greg. All right. Any other council comments? Move into our administrative reports. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to touch on the workshops you had mentioned. So this past Saturday, we had a strategic plan workshop related to roads and street improvements. This coming Saturday, we have a workshop, ten AM here in the NPR at City Hall, related to brush clearance, fire safety, emerging and advancing technologies. More specifically, a company called Firescore AI, which can assist us with some of our brush clearance inspections by using aerial photography and sensor data. It'll be more of a broader meeting where people can ask questions and we can have a little more back and forth. We've seen a couple of presentations at council, but this will be allowing opportunity to have a more in-depth conversation with the people from Firescore AI and ask them those questions. So that'll be this Saturday, the thirteenth, at ten AM here. The following Saturday, the CERT will be having a meeting. They're going to be nine AM here in the NPR at City Hall. A CERT meeting, they're going to try to gather, gather as many people that are CERT certified here in the Heights. Have a meeting with a CERT instructor to work on some trainings that are the things we want to do more in the future. So if anybody is CERT certified, please join us this, next Saturday. And also, if you are interested in CERT, if you have an interest, want to know a little more about it, it's a great opportunity to come down. You don't have to be CERT certified to attend and learn more. There'll be people here that can help you if you do want to move forward with it, get you connected to how to be able to go through those classes and obtain that CERT certification. And then on the following Saturday, the twenty-seventh, we will be having the next, in our FireWise workshops. This one will be Red Cross Ready, which is going to be a presentation by the Red Cross about evacuation and being prepared at home. So that will be on the twenty-seventh here at City Hall. And then the following October fourth, we will be talking strategic plan for the fire department. So I know the one right after that for fire department.
So, one of our residents, Rafferty, suggested that possibly doing some type of like postcard mailer? That maybe we're not reaching out to all the residents about these workshops? How is, is that possible to do something like that, to get a simple postcard out to residents about that workshop? Something very simple that, you know, doesn't have to be over the top and budget conscious and to try to get more. I mean, the fire department one is probably one of the more critical workshops that we're going to conduct along with probably the Capstone workshop that we need to have around, you know, trying to come up with the path forward for keeping the city sustainable?
We can look at it and we do utilize a company to put those together and mail them for us.
All park?
Eighteen hundred dollars or so?
It's probably...
Around, around that eighteen hundred to two thousand probably for postcard.
I mean, I don't know if we need to, I don't think we need to agendaize this, do we Todd? Can we talk about, oh, yeah. So I mean, I would, I would mean, say that probably is money well spent to try to get people to, to come to a meeting about probably one of the more important, you know, aspects of our city, our fire department. So, why don't we, I mean, unless there's some concern about spending the money by council, I would suggest that we try that to see if we can get, I think we had four people at the last meeting and that, I don't know if it was just because people are, I mean, I hope people are interested in the city and would want to make a difference and be part of something as important as the strategic planning of the city and maybe just the methods we have of getting out to them aren't working.
Yeah, we can definitely work to put it out and list them.
Let's try it for the fire department meeting and let's see if we get, you know, if we get, if it's, if it's worth the eighteen hundred dollars, maybe we'll do it for all of them. But if we get a good turnout, maybe we'll, we'll look at it.
We can work on that one.
Any, any concerns with that?
Well, I would suggest on the postcard, mention that you can watch it on your computer at home or tune in later on the agenda from the website.
But I'd like people here to participate. I mean, that's...
Well, sure.
I mean, that would be the goal, right, is to get people here to participate.
But it's Saturday morning. People are busy, the world's in turmoil and so...
I, I, I sure support doing this.
Okay.
Well, I think we should, let's do it for the fire department session in October and see what kind of turnout we get and if we find that we're beginning to get people asking us questions and talking. I mean, it was disappointing having two members of the citizens to me last Saturday.
I think we had four. I think we had four.
Yeah.
I think it was four, so. Mr. Dominguez is here. Actually, two of them are here tonight, so.
Does it help to advertise refreshments?
Maybe, maybe if we say coffee and donuts, we'll get more people.
I don't know, I...
Yeah, so I mean, I think Carol's right.
The only way you get people is, I did it the first couple of FireWise. You, you call them, you send them emails, and I'm not willing to keep doing that for every meeting. I mean, it takes time.
But I think the postcard, I mean, the postcard will go to every resident in the city and hopefully they'll pay attention to it and maybe come. We can try it.
Well, it was in the mayor's column and it was in the Heights.
I did my gosh darnest. It was in a guac talk. It was in a guac talk. It was in mayor's column. I know that John and others put it out on, there are several, you know, social media events, so.
Maybe each council person should take the responsibility to contact twenty households or something.
Stephen, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, thank you. Just quickly, I've sent out a number of mailings to the city, so familiar with it. The bulk rate cost is the same whether you send a postcard or eight and a half by eleven flat. So then the printing difference is just a couple hundred dollars. So I should suggest sending an eight and a half by eleven flat and have some nice graphics. And what attracts people is money. So maybe work in something about what is decided from the information gathered at these meetings could affect your future taxes.
Yeah, absolutely. And Mr. Dominguez?
So who's going to create this flyer?
Angie. Angie and Grace.
John Dominguez, Avocado Crest Road. One of the problems as far as communicating with the residents, I think, at least how I interpret it, is the fact that La Haber Heights does have a website on Facebook, but it's one-way website. There's, nobody can comment on anything and there's no interaction. And that is the difference between La Haber Heights Facebook website and the real estate, Mr. Hernandez, Hernandez, Roy?
Ray Fernandez.
Ray, yeah.
Yes.
His is interactive. There's many heated comments that are being made, that's unfortunate. But there's still, there's interaction and that's what I'm relying on when I'm trying to promote anything and everything that I'm trying to get out to the residents. It's his website because it's, it, there's an interaction. And the, the one for La Haber Heights Facebook is not. It's a one-way thing and it's hardly ever used. So I think it could be used better. Thank you.
Yeah, I try to, I try to provide, a, a city, at least from my perspective, I try to provide some input on Ray's website. I think it's difficult to have an interactive city website because that would take resources to man and that would be really difficult to do. But we can, we can think about that.
Yeah, and if you have an interactive city website, it becomes under the First Amendment, an open forum.
Right.
And open public forum. And then you have to allow people to say whatever about whatever and that gets sloppy. So, you know.
I'm sure, I'm sure we would have great advice from council before we would ever try to do something like that.
Advice would be the least worst of it.
Yes. All right.
Mr. Mayor, if I could interject something about CERT. CERT is, training is designed for, even for those people who have, feel they have no aptitude whatsoever in this. It doesn't commit you to be, being part of a response team, although that is possible if you desire. If you gain nothing else from it from, except knowing how to take care of yourself and your family better, it's well worth the time. So you don't need any aptitude or background to take a CERT course.
Okay, thank you, Norm. Rafferty, anything else from city manager?
That's all.
City attorney?
No report.
Community development?
The only thing to talk about tonight is to thank council and the planning commission and the residents. We've been going through the housing element process over a great, great number of months in time and years here. But we did at last, earlier in the August and July, we reviewed and adopted our housing element code amendments. We submitted those to HCD for review. And we heard back at the end of last week that HCD has certified our housing element. So we are now in compliance with state housing, one of the first times we have accomplished that here for the city. So it's a great thing. It's not the end of the work that needs to be done, but it is a great step forward. And also, as we move into the next housing element cycle, which is, comes up in 2029, it should make that process a little easier, giving us a good place to begin from and a good starting document to work off as we move forward into the next one as well. So that's the, the good news. I have to report back to the council on that, that item. That's all.
Congratulations on the housing element then. Think there's a lot of people that are very glad we've got that behind us. All right, our first fire chief report. Chief Martin?
Okay, so the, nothing's really changed. The monthly incidents are in par with what we've had in the past. Probably a slight uptick with structural responses. And we had an incident the other night. But other than that, they're pretty much the same. The difference that we're seeing is the automatic aid is being provided back and forth. So I'm going to be working with the county and going over some particulars and our response to them and their response to us. It has to be a two-way street, so I'm going to work that out with them. You mentioned how we are as compared to how we were. So I just want to let you know that when I started recruiting, we had twenty-seven firefighters. Today, we have sixty-six firefighters with eighteen on a bench. And that doesn't include the ones that are going to be graduating in December. So we're doing very well. It is my vision to almost take us to an independent state where we'll be able to handle any and all incidents within the city. Albeit, if it's a catastrophic event, we're going to need help anyways. But trying to work with them, we are, for the first time, partnered with Downey Fire Department and had a training session this past week. We will have another one come the thirteenth and my next meeting with the area E Chiefs. I'm going to reach out to all the other partners that we have. The last piece of equipment that we need to put our peers in service is on order and expected to be here within ten days. So once we get that, we'll be able to put a lot more things in the works. Once we complete that, I'm looking at maybe three weeks. We're going to have to reach out to Senator Archuleta to let him know that we're going to have some kind of a, and then I'll work with everybody here to see what's a good time to have a, an introduction of our new fire engine and what we're going to do as far as celebrating that incident. The brush inspection, want to point out that the inspections, if you look at it, what we have in process right now is an adequate system that we cannot accurately track what has fallen out of compliance because we have eighty-one inspections that are in progress right now. And the computer can't differentiate those inspections from being brush clearance to being an issue for them to get a fire box or a fire lock on their property. And then we're working on that to provide a tally of how many of the non-compliant parcels are from prior, prior months. So you can have an accurate picture of what is really going on at the brush clearance program as opposed to having a graph that's not really accurate. So we're working on that and be patient with us. We'll get it done. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Can you just talk a little bit about the, the brush fire we had in Powder Canyon? I think it was this month, but it might have been late last month. Did we ever determine a cause for that fire?
Well, as you know, that is a heavily used trail. So as we went out to investigate it, there was, I was there for maybe thirty minutes with Camp Toman, Chief Toman, I'm sorry, from Battalion Twenty-One with LA County. And while we were there, there were no less than thirty people that passed us by on the trail. So we surmised that we had, at the same time, we had Southern California Edison out there. And they determined it had nothing to do with their tower. Because if you look at the proximity, it was probably thirty yards from that tower in a small area. Hard to tell what caused it. Could have been somebody smoking and threw their cigarette out in the brush. and threw their cigarette out in the brush. But it was undeterminable just because you have a couple of factors. You have people that are on the trail all the time and there's no camera, there are no cameras that can capture any kind of activity. So it's hard to say if, if it was somebody that just flicked the cigarette out into the brush or if it was intentional. We had people, so many people on the ground so quickly that we were able to keep it to maybe a hundred yards total. It was less than even a quarter of an acre that was involved, a small amount of brush. And then your people were up the following day checking their equipment and making sure it had nothing to do with the, with their, the tower.
All right. Any questions for the chief?
No, but I have a comment. Maybe when you send the flyer out, you should mention that people could come and see the new fire engine. I was going to suggest have the Archuleta fat at the same time, but maybe that's too. I'm trying to think of things that would draw people. And we do have a brand-new engine they could come and see. It's here, right?
Absolutely. We, coming from a large city like Los Angeles City, community involvement is paramount. You have to partner with the community to reassure them that they have excellent service provided to them. I want the people of La Habra Heights to recognize that and to see their firefighters. When they see the amount of firefighters and the, what we can bring to any kind of an incident, I assure you, they will probably be impressed. And I offer anybody that comes to La Habra Heights an opportunity to come and visit us. Doesn't matter when they want to come, they can come anytime. And we've arranged, we have actually partnered with La Habra. They reach out to us constantly. We did a ribbon cutting with Dunkin' Donuts where I just think it's a good way of letting them know, La Habra Heights is a friendly fire department. What a way to partner. And when LA County says they're too busy, we're busy, but we're not too busy to reach out to the community. So I think that looks very good for La Habra Heights. They were very impressed with us. I took the new engine out there and we did a ribbon cutting ceremony. We also did a little Cub Scout demo over at a nearby Hillview, Hillview Elementary, I think, I believe it is, right behind Shakey's. And that's really kind of like on our border. It's not really, one of those things where I asked the Cubmaster, I said, "Did you reach out to the county?" He goes, "Well, I didn't think of it" because two of the five people that run that particular Cub Scout group live in La Habra Heights. So they reached out to us. And I said, "Sure, we can go out there and give you a little demo." And it was fun. So we can continue that. And yes, we can always have the people come out. We don't have, I didn't have it for the concerts in the park, but that would have been neat to have it there for them. And we have some upcoming events. We'll have it.
Okay. Anything else? All right. Sheriff's Department report?
Good evening, City Council. We had two hit-and-run incidents that are currently being investigated. Three traffic collisions within the city. One, two grand thefts, one, two vandalisms, and one embezzlement. And one petty theft. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'll repeat that. We had two hit-and-run incidents that are currently being investigated. Three traffic collisions, two grand thefts, two vandalisms, one embezzlement, and one petty theft. And that's all I have.
All right. Any questions for the sheriff? Okay, let's move into the consent calendar. Anyone have any of these items they want to pull?
Can I pull fifteen for, that's one Stephen mentioned?
Any others? Motion?
Move approval?
With the exception of fifteen?
Yes.
Second.
Brian?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Norm?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
John's yes. All right. Number fifteen.
Yeah, I just have a question, a little bit of a question on that for Rafferty. You heard Stephen talk about this. And this is, my interpretation of this, this is a separate entity that we accept their maps for the city and everything else. And what we do as a city, it's already on our books, but this is a separate entity that really doesn't apply to this. If we want to do something with that, we can do that at a different date if it affects insurance or something else. Is that correct?
Yes, that portion that Mr. Blackdon was talking about is related to the building code amendments we make as part of like building standards. So we apply building standards across the entire city as being in the high-security fire zone. So there isn't a difference between one area or the others related to building standards. This map is, we have to adopt the state map from the state fire marshal's office for that one, which is separate and not necessarily directly correlated between the two.
But if they're building a house and it wasn't necessarily in this map of a high-fire hazard area, but it's in the city, it would require the home hardening and tempered glass and things like this.
Correct.
Which, to me, is a good idea myself. But, okay, that's the only questions I have. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve item fifteen.
Second?
Second.
Norm?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
John's yes. All right. We covered seventeen. Congratulations again. Eighteen.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start off on this one. I don't know if the chief, if you have anything you want to add or? So this one is related to the brush clearance. So this is a proposal for agreement with local media which operates as First Due for Fire Prevention Software. So currently, the city uses 3DI to track and prepare letters and do everything related to brush clearance. When we entered into that agreement several years ago, there weren't a lot of companies out that were doing that type of system, that type of software, proprietary software. Since that time, things have changed and progressed. There are other companies that are out there. One of those is First Due. So this is a request to move to First Due. So we would end our agreement with 3DI when it comes up for renewal at the end of the year and move into an agreement with First Due. One of the benefits with First Due is it allows for a more robust component to it. So it's not only just brush clearance, looking at brush clearance inspections, but also in there, they can pre-program things related to fire hydrants, where meters are, electrical meters, boxes and other things for people's gates and all those things that all of the fire department would have access to. So as, say, the crew is running a call to a particular property, the captain would have access to the software and be able to look at and understand right where fire hydrants are, if there is a law, a fire department access to a gate, where that's located, where power may be, those things there that would provide additional benefits, not only to the prevention side, but also the operational side of it. There is another benefit of it as well as the cost for this service is less than 3DI. So there is generous cost savings with moving to, to First Due. Also, with First Due, we have the ability to extract data and reports a little bit more efficiently than we can out of 3DI today. So hopefully it'll make things like the brush clearance report a little bit easier to generate and track exactly where things are in those processes with them. So that's, the recommendation is for the city council to authorize the city manager to enter an agreement with Local Media Inc., DBA First Due for software in support of the fire department prevention program. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them for you.
Questions?
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
Norm?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
John's yes. Number nineteen.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This item is the Punta Hills Habitat Preservation Authority Citizens Technical Advisory Committee. It is time to reappoint Catherine Howan. She has been on the C-TAC since, I believe, 2012 as a city representative. She works on their citizens committee. Kathy also does work with the vector control for us with as well. She's a great asset to us and to the C-TAC. So it's staff's recommendation that we reappoint Kathy Howan to the C-TAC committee, which would run for another four years, I believe, on their, their, their committee for it. Unfortunately, she's a little under the weather tonight, so she wouldn't be able to make it in tonight.
That's why she's not here.
Yeah, that, she's, she's been a little under the weather and recovering. Otherwise, she would be here tonight. She just wanted me to convey to the council that she enjoys very much working with the C-TAC and the vector control and helping the, the community. And she is a, she's definitely a great asset to the community and does a lot of work, not only with those, but with Firewatch and other, other committees and organizations in the, in there. There, there has been one vacancy that has opened up. Mr. Francis has resigned recently, so we're going to be in the process of recruiting for another C-TAC member. So see some guac talks and other things going out for a new position to fill Roy's vacancy on, on the C-TAC. But the recommendation tonight is for the council to reappoint Catherine Howan to a four-year term on the Punta Hills Habitat Preservation Authority Citizens Technical Advisory. If you have any questions, happy to answer.
I don't have any questions. I think she's, we're fortunate to have her there. She's very active. She comes here and gives us reports frequently. She talks to me frequently about the issues, makes sure she understands what's important to the city and takes that information back to her role. So I'm, I'm very, very pleased with what she's done, so.
Yes, great. Move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Norm?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Absolutely, yes. Rafferty, let's just make sure that when we ask for volunteers, we try to get someone that has a little bit of an understanding of the, how can I say this? The needs of the city around the, the safety aspects associated with the habitat. I think that's, that's really important. I, I'd like to look to like our emergency preparedness committee, someone that's, you know, maybe talk to those folks, see if there's an interest there. Because I think they, those folks understand what we, you know, what we really need from the habitat in the form of, you know, safety and fire prevention and things like that. All right. Twenty.
This item is, over the weekend, we had a strategic planning meeting where we met jointly with city council and the roads advisory committee to discuss street improvement projects, District Seven, the cost of those projects, the ever-increasing cost of construction that we've seen over the last several years, and had a larger, one of many larger, more conversations that the council is undertaking related to strategic planning and how we allocate general fund dollars and where those should go and the priorities of those things. As you, as we've talked about earlier, we have a series of workshops set up. We just completed roads. Next month is the fire department. November is sheriff's department. In January is going to be administration side of it. Then February, we're going to have one to sort of wrap up all of those topics and those things and start looking at, as we were kind of talking about at the meeting, what takes priority, where those dollars should go, how should it be spent. I think it was, it was a, a good meeting that we had and a good discussion the council had with especially the roads advisory committee. You know, Chair Donato was able to attend, provide some good information from the, the roads advisory committee to that. And we had some members of the public provide some impact. So this is just to, for us, if we wanted to have any other additional comments or thoughts from our workshop over the past weekend.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, you know, obviously, there's two members of the public that were, that are here tonight, that were there, I think, that participated. Thank you for, you know, bringing that forward. I know we talked about this at the beginning, so I won't go into a lot of detail, but there's some tough decisions we have to make as a city to make sure that, you know, our fire department is sustainable, our roads are sustainable, the city itself is sustainable. Like I said, there's some tough decisions that are going to come out of these series of workshops that we as a city need to make. So I really encourage anyone who's watching this to participate in those workshops so that your voice can be heard. Any other comments on this?
I, I would encourage, I don't know how many people watch this meeting, but if you're watching and you didn't tune into the roads workshop, it wasn't, it's not that long. Mr. Steffler and Mr. Pispiza and the roads committee did an excellent job of explaining the situation and giving you information about why it's important to your city. And I really think you should take the time to watch it. It is important for safety, for property values, and it's one of the big components of our town. And we're going to have to see what the residents want to do. So I would suggest if you're watching this and you didn't watch that, maybe give it a peek. The other, I was just going to say this. This is just interesting. I looked at my property tax bill and I think I paid two-eighty-four for the roads right now, two-sixty-four or two-eighty-four. And back in 1996, the city first decided to deal with the roads. It incorporated in seventy-eight and in, they didn't do anything with the roads. And I got on the council in ninety-four and I asked the city manager, "What?" And he said, "Well, we just couldn't afford it." So what happened in around 1996 was the city, you didn't have to put it on the ballot at that point, but the, the roads had really deteriorated. So the council at that point put two assessments on the residents, which I think people were paying, this is back in 1996, there was a bond and there was a maintenance assessment. And they actually were paying more money, I was paying more money in 1996 than we're paying now. So that's something I think we should bring up to the public when we talk about these costs. The other suggestion I would have for the, for the next workshops is that we kind of try to make the general fund into more of a, an entity that, I think the average Joe thinks, or the average Jane just thinks, the general fund is just this loose amount of money that the city has. They don't realize that it's basically the bank account. It's, it's, it's our operating money and it pays for insurance and it pays for paramedics. I think we need to do a little better job of educating the non-sophisticated people like me as to what a general fund does. So other than that, I, I do think, and I again compliment Mr. Steffler and Mr. Pispiza and the roads committee for the excellent, and the city manager for the excellent presentation, which I thought was really good and informative.
Any other comments? All right. Again, thank you. Thank you, Greg. I know you're a driving force behind this. And Rafferty, thank you for all the work that you and Angie did in getting us where we needed to be for Saturday. All right. where we needed to be for Saturday. All right. So, Mr. City Attorney? Do, do I, is, is this the one that I need to step out for, or have we gotten past the?
No more, no more Edison's with, no more issues with Southern California Edison?
Okay, so I can stay in the room this time?
You are fine to stay.
Okay, all right. So let's, twenty-one, the Hacienda Road Safety Improvement Project Construction Management and Inspection Agreement Amendment. Continued.
Thank you, Mayor. This one has been continued a few times. We've talked about it a few different, a few different ways and a few different times. At our, our last meeting, we kind of went back and looked at the potential of us going after an errors and emissions over the design of it. In that time, since that past meeting, we have been working with Caltrans on the submittals and the reimbursements of the projects, talking about the direct cost overruns that we've had for this, this project in, you know, design, construction, CM and inspection. And there is the ability for us to go back and request some additional funding for it. We had seen an increase in funding at one point in time. Our previous city engineer, Akram, had gone and worked with Caltrans back in twenty-twenty-three, I believe, and increased the, the amount of money that we had for the projects, not only for striping and guardrail and signal on Long Hacienda for all of those projects. So there is the ability for us to go back and ask for additional funding to cover the additional costs related to construction, CM and, and everything for the project. So we are working on a submittal to Caltrans to go back and try to recover those costs as the, the original award is just a little over $900,000 for the entire project. And as we look at just the construction component of it, is, is a million dollars for the striping and the signal construction. So our Caltrans representative didn't say we could probably get everything, but we can get, he's going to try to get us as much as we can to get a little bit of additional funding to cover those costs that come over. They have some additional budget that they always save for this type of aspect of things. The biggest thing is getting the project done and completed, which we need to do to be able to move forward and to really complete the project. We need additional funding for the construction management and the inspection component of it. Right now, their, their best, their best idea proposal, when we were looking at it from then to now, that they would need probably additional forty-four working days. Construction management and inspection isn't a direct cost agreement. It's based on the amount of time that they work on the project. So it is, that is, as they work, they bill for those hours that they work on it. In the beginning, we look at the cost of that, do their best to, to provide a proposal that they feel will cover the amount of time that would be needed. We are about a year and a half into the construction of the signal. I don't think any of us thought we'd be here a year and a half later trying to complete the construction of the signal. So there's definitely been a little more time and effort. One of the interesting things of the street workshop was, we went back and looked at all those dollars and cents of all those projects. And pretty consistently, when you look at the construction management and inspection, generally, they do come in under what their proposal is, what the council has awarded. This is just one. And a lot of those, how much they're under or over is directly related to how fast the project goes. The, the faster the project is done and completed, the less hours of inspection in the field for the inspector, the less back and forth with the inspection, the construction manager to be able to coordinate and authorize all the work and get everything done and completed. So that's kind of where we are is, my recommendation is that council authorize the, the extension or the, the increase to the, sorry. Sorry, to the, increase to the CMN inspection budget, so we can complete the project. If council doesn't want to go that way, I'll just have them submit their final bills and then I will end up having to close out the project. So it's kind of where we're at. We're very near the end now. All of the signals have been installed. The power's been pulled to the meter. We're, a little bit later this month, we will have a terrace, the company that does the detection, will be out to complete that. We have to complete the final bit of striping. There are some poles, poles and signage and a couple of crosswalks, buttons that need to go in. So we're getting very much to the end of the project. So hopefully it shouldn't be too much longer to be able to get us completed and, and get there. But that's, my recommendation is for us to ask Caltrans for additional funding to cover the cost of additional construction, CM and inspection, and any other cost overruns we've had to offset any of those increased costs that we have. Kind of where, I'll leave it. If you have any questions, happy to answer.
Any questions?
I have a question. So of this additional charge, how much was generated by the error in the height of the wires?
They, they pull that number out and you figure it's about fourteen to twelve working days of that. So like a little less than a quarter of the cost of this.
Okay, so a quarter of?
The $68,000 increase.
Okay. So why doesn't the entity that made the mistake pay that? Or why don't we ask the entity that made the mistake to pay that?
We'd have to go back through the errors and omissions process to, to reap that. We can't. But there are also the ones that do all the submittals for Caltrans that are in the process of getting the reimbursements for us right now, which means they will probably stop doing that once we move down that path. And we'll have to go out and find somebody new to work to complete all that Caltrans paperwork to be able to submit for the reimbursements and the increases.
I mean, it's, what, what's sixty divided by four? $15,000. It's not much, but it would pay for your mailer.
Yeah, I'm just worried about how much, how much, how much would we eat up in legal fees and other fees to go after that? And staff time and everything else. And then if they do end up saying, you know, we're going to take our ball and go home because we don't want to pay this, then how much more do we have to pay to go back after the reimbursements and the other?
Well, what's, what's beginning to boggle my mind over several years is we've had three or four instances where we've had contractors or subcontractors who've made a mistake. And we obviously pay them to have insurance when, it's, I mean, maybe they wouldn't take their ball. Maybe they would pay some money if we asked them.
Well, the, the problem with this particular issue is that a different designer did the pole. And that's not, not NV5, as much as I question the size of this bump. So to me, the optimal solution would be, we know we had an extra two weeks, two and a half weeks of time spent. And if that represents two-thirds or three-quarters of this, then we, I would, I would be prepared to authorize the city manager to attempt to negotiate a reduction of the $68,000 to relate to that one issue. If he can't, I'm tired of the issue. We, going forward, we're, we're going to watch this much more closely. So my, my, my thought would be to allow, to ask Rafferty to go back and say, look, man, sixty-eight grand is just too big a bump. And, you know, if twelve grand or fourteen grand is a component that relates to this issue with the height of the pole, then we take, most companies, particularly people that do this much work with us, might be willing to negotiate that. The other point I would make, that one thing we learned during the streets proposal, is that the bid award, that typically, NV5 comes in on their management and inspection costs lower than the bid. In other words, they could charge the bid if they chose to, but they don't. They come in on, they, they come in under, you know, almost, you, almost uniformly. So there's some good spirit there somewhere. I don't know where it is. But I, I mean, this isn't worth bringing back another time, I don't think. So I, I just, I, my, my thought would be to give Rafferty that authority. If he could negotiate a better deal, negotiate it. If not, give him the authority to pay it.
Do you want to put that in the form of a motion?
Was it NV5 that made the error, or wasn't it some other company?
It was a different company that did the design, right. And the, what, what?
Are they the ones that are going to?
They, we, we haven't brought a claim against them. You know, you can do that, but as, but as the mayor said, you know, they're not going to voluntarily say we screwed up. So it's going to end up being, what do we pay Todd to do? We're outside council to do. It's not, there's not enough money to get excited about if it's twelve or $14,000. I don't like it, but I, I just don't want to see it again.
So it sounds like that was a motion?
Yeah. Do you want to put that in the form of a motion?
I, I move that the city manager be authorized to negotiate a reduction for the $68,000 bill from NV5. And that in the event that he cannot successfully negotiate a, a reduction for reasons of his subjective choosing, that he be authorized to, to pay the additional in charge.
And I'll second that.
Norm?
I, I have a question. How can you negotiate a, a reduction if you've already said we're going to pay the whole amount unless they voluntarily reduce it? I, I see your point, though. I just, just a question. I, go ahead and try, but I don't think it's going to do any good. So a, as to the vote, I'll vote yes.
Carol?
I'm going to vote no.
Brian?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Johnson, yes. I think that's the first no vote in my mayoral career. All right, twenty-two. Proposition A Fund Exchange with City of Hawaii, Hawaiian Gardens.
Thank you, Mayor. Our assistant city manager will give that report.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Item twenty-two is a Prop A Fund Exchange with the City of Hawaiian Gardens. Every fiscal year, the City of La Habra Heights receives money from Metro for Prop A funds. Prop A funds are exclusively to benefit public transit, which we do not have. So in this case, Metro does allow cities to, to trade with other jurisdictions within the county. And it is a common practice. We've been doing this for quite a while with the City of Hawaiian Gardens. And Hawaiian Gardens has agreed to purchase 80,000 of our accumulated Prop A funds in return for $60,000 general, general fund monies. So again, we are limited, we are limited as to how we can use our Prop A funds. So we do exchange them with Hawaiian Gardens and receive general fund monies and we can use that for anything.
Have we shopped this around?
I have been, and I've actually had two cities reach out to me, but they don't want to pay us.
Seventy-five cents on the dollar?
They want to pay us less, which I will find another city that will match this or pay us more. Because I know a lot of cities out there, they know we're really limited and they could use those, those funds. So we're not settling. So.
No, I think, I just want to make sure I heard what you're saying. You don't think we'll find anyone that will give us a better deal than Hawaiian Gardens at seventy-five cents on the dollar?
Correct. I was close with one city, but their council said no.
Got it.
So anyway, it is recommended that city council approve this Prop A Fund Exchange and authorize the city manager to enter an agreement for the exchange with the City of Hawaiian Gardens.
All right. Do I have a motion? Questions?
Just one question. How long can these accumulate?
I believe it's three years. So if we do not use it, we have to pay it back.
So we're at that point, then?
We're, no, we're okay. We're fine. We just keep using, we can increase the amount if Hawaiian Gardens is willing to give us, exchange more. We can do that. So we're not lapsing any of the funds. We're okay.
Okay. I'll move approval on this exchange.
Brian?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Norm?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Johnson, yes. Thank you, Angie. Twenty-two. Approval and adoption of publicly available pay schedule and resolution.
Thank you, Mayor. Our assistant city manager will also go over this PERS report that we have to put out.
CalPERS, CalPERS requires, requires, well, every, every agency that contracts with them to provide a comprehensive salary schedule. And we do have to have, it's actually the state, but they, they require it to. And they require us to adopt the schedule and a resolution and post it on our, our website. We have been doing this every year. I usually take it to council in September. So this would just be an annual thing. So staff recommends the approval and the adoption of the attached publicly available pay schedule. And the adoption of resolution number 202527 approving the publicly available pay schedule.
Any questions? Motion? Second?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. Norm?
Yes.
Carol? Greg?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
All right. So that's the end of our administrative items. Any council member reports or information they want to share? Any public comments from anyone not on the agenda? Bruce Thomas?
I want to do something different. John challenged me here a while back because I was going to smart off and we were carrying on. What I want to do is, Brian, thank you for being the person, the business person that you are and doing, whether I agree with you or not, we've always been friends. Carol, I see you as the legal person amongst us. Thank you for what you do. We don't always agree. This is true of everybody. Norm, you're just the quiet guy here that does it. John's been a personal friend as well as instigating this city to become more of a community. Thank you for what you've done for Firewatch, for the fire department. You've brought all of this up, got something started. We need more volunteers. The city's going to go kapui if we don't get volunteers for Firewatch, for SERD. This fire department, as great as I think it is, is going to be dead if we have a major earthquake and we don't have volunteers to help. That's all I want to say. Thank you all.
Oh, Bruce, thank you. What a great way to end our meeting tonight. So thank you so much, and meeting adjourned.